Good evening. This is the April 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Townes New Remain Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. My name is Ted Baker and I am the Chairperson for the Board. This is a public proceeding and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that is being said unless the Board votes to enter into executive session for MAINTs and Freedom of Access Act. You also have the right to review any of the materials created or received by the Board that relate to the Board's deliberation unless state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the Board if you are unable to hear or would like to access any material. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded. If you would like or need access to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the Town's Administrator. I would also like to welcome Western Hills Access Television and its viewers. Everybody wave.
Hello.
For those of you who are present, if you have not done so already, please sign in at this time.
They did.
This is a working session of the Planning Board. MAINT Freedom of Access Law entitles the public to attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audio or video recording of the meeting. The Board's policy is not to allow public comment during the meeting. However, as Chairperson, I may allow exception when it is in the interest of the Board. An example of an exception would be to allow an abutter to address the Board. By Newry's Planning Board bylaws, this meeting may not last for more than two and a half hours. The meeting may be extended by 30-minute increments if a motion to extend with a pro vote is made for each 30-minute increment. If the meeting is not extended, any remaining agenda items or discussions will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following business. Correspondence received since our last meeting. Forger Development LLC application for a minor subdivision on Monkey Brook Road, application number 25-285. Timberline TH LLC application for a subdivision on Timberline Road, application number 25-286. Prior to attending to the above business, the Board must first conduct some administrative procedures, the first of which is attendance. For Section 2.B of the Newry Planning Board Ordinance amended June 8th of 2021, the Board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members. In order for the meeting to proceed, I must first establish that a quorum is present. A quorum consists of two voting members. The members of the Board are myself, Ted Baker, Bruce Pierce, Vice Chair, and John Goetheer, also known as Gooch, Secretary. We also have two alternates, Meredith Herrup and Rob Cates. We have three regular members of the Board present tonight, so let the record show that we have a quorum. Having ascertained that a quorum exists, I will now move on to reviewing voting eligibility. A voting member that was absent from the previous meeting is not eligible to vote on all business unless they have completed an affidavit stating that they have reviewed the materials for the missed meeting, read the draft minutes, and have listened to the audio recording of the meeting. All three members of the Board were present at the last meeting and therefore all are eligible to vote, let the record show. Having reviewed voting eligibility, I will now move on to the minutes of the prior meeting. Does any member of the Board have any edits or comments on the minutes? Rob?
Nope.
Meredith? Gooch?
Nope, I'm fine.
I'm good. Having heard no comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Newry Planning Board held Wednesday, March 19th, 2025.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as drafted for the March 19th meeting has been made. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I will take a vote. One, two, three. The minutes are approved unanimously. Let's move on to tonight's business. The first item is correspondence received. And we have an edited agenda in front of us. The original agenda had mentioned the email stream with the Town Attorney about the SLOTA interpretation and how it affects, not Timberline but Monkey Brook. That was discussed at the last meeting and therefore I think does not need the, we don't have any new correspondence.
We do not.
Okay.
Not about that subject.
And we'll get, come back to that here, it's when we get down to the next item of business. We also had in the original agenda, which we had an abutter to application 25-26 that sent in an email. Is that?
That's been entered into the record.
Okay, so that's also, so we now have new correspondence, which appears to be a, I assume that's an email from Mr. Moran?
Copies are attached to all of your packets. And those copies, Rick's got them, okay.
And that had to deal with Timberline, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, do you need that? What do you need that, if can we just attach it to the minutes or do you need it read aloud?
I have a mirror.
Okay.
Try to stack them in David's order.
So, from what I'm understanding, that there is a correspondence from Monkey Brook that has not been presented tonight, so, but that is included within this package?
No, Ted's not done yet, he's gonna read it.
No, the, I can read it?
No, I can read it, I don't care who reads it.
The abutter from Monkey Brook was handled at the previous meeting. Right.
And was, does not need to be. That's why it's crossed out on your agenda.
Does not need to be, that's why it's not on the edited agenda. We do have new correspondence, which I would like the Code Enforcement Officer to address for the record.
The first bit of correspondence is about the Timberline TH LLC, and it was from a direct abutter. On Tuesday, March 25th, hello Joel, this is Rick Morant, owner of Parcel One, Abutting Parcel One A. He spoke briefly on the phone regarding emailing me a copy of the, he calls them the Verata condo plans at 8 Timberline. Please email, and he gives me his email address. I replied on the 27th. I have asked the architect for PDF versions, because he, oh, I'm sorry. Please see attached on the 25th, on the 27th. I let him know that I did not have the architectural plans electronically, so I ended up having to contact the architect, get those sent to me, and then printed them and sent only several copies of the architectials because they're too large and I can only attach so many megabytes, gigabytes, whatever it is, via our email through Outlook. So, I said, please see attached, these are her review, only drawing one is a skiway road view. So, I can show or refer to the plan numbers to let you know which ones I sent her.
Okay, so, so this gentleman was interested in the architectural renderings?
His chief complaint was the giant spotlight that the restaurant building used to have on the back, and he just wondered how tall these were going to be. So, I sent him the architectural drawing from Ava, ABA Home Design. I sent him sheet one, and then I sent him sheet 15, just so he could have an idea of how big these buildings were. And I have not heard back from him since.
And there is a.
So, I have a little bit of a question. So, there was an attachment?
Right, that's what I just described.
Right, can I get a copy?
Do you want a copy of these?
For the finding?
Sure, yep. You're welcome.
And there is a performance standard online as well that we will have to review.
Yes, so, yeah, but that was, that was a verbal comment he made to me on the phone when he requested the point. And that's the first.
Are there any questions for the Board on this email screen? It appears that it was involved a request for architectural plans, which seems to have been handled satisfactorily and I've heard back from the gentleman.
I've not had any more questions from him.
Okay, are we set for the record?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Can we just keep going?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, okay.
What's the next one?
The next one is dated from March 31st, and this is from Thomas Kears, and it has to do with the Monkey Brook Road subdivision. Hi, I got a letter from Mainland Development Consultants about the subdivision, in quotes, Monkey Brook Road subdivision, end quote. I am not able to get to the Newry Town Hall. I own 10 Deer Run Road. Can you email a copy of the plans for review? Thank you, Thomas P. Kears, and his title. I replied on the 31st, so good afternoon, please see the attached. And I sent him the electronic version of what you sent us for Monkey Brook. I'm pointing to Rick Dunton from Mainland Development.
And he appears to be satisfied?
He has not responded yet.
And there was, it was just a request and information, no?
No questions, no comments.
That one had an attachment too?
Those are, that's the electronic filing that we got from Mainland. You've got CC'd on that, that's the entire package.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I sent him the entire package.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, we got, what, one more?
I do.
And are there any questions on that second email screen? No, okay, next.
And the last email was one I started today with Rick Dunton from Mainland about Timberline TH LLC. Hi Rick, I've been studying the multiple entrances for this project since this is a change news, I think, and in parentheses I put, I don't have a vote, that Section 15-6 of the UDRO may be a concern for the project. I know Newry's Fire Chief does not like the multiple entrances onto skiway, and I have a concern about the parking lot 3 access road being utilized for Phase 2 parking and building. That access road is currently used as a one-way entrance by the resort and blocked off at Skiway Road when the parking lot is full. I wanted to give you a heads up, so before we go through the performance review, after it's found complete, also in parentheses, you and John would have time to consider other options if needed. See you tonight, Dwell Core Code Enforcement, blah, blah, blah. Rick wrote back, thanks Joel for the heads up. John and Dana have already discussed the one-way nature of that parking access road, and it sounds like everyone is willing to have it be two-way. It meets requirements withwise. When it comes up, we can check about it. See you tonight. Rick Dunton, Mainland Development Consultants, and his titles. No attachments.
Any questions on that email screen?
Yep.
Mr. Dunton, are you happy with how it was presented?
Did I read well?
Yeah, I think the presentation was wonderful.
All right.
Oh, so this is two copies of the same?
Yeah, looks like you do have.
Yep.
Serial, I guess.
Yep.
Because I have used my word. Did you guys?
Yeah. I don't know why you got some copies.
Let's move on to the next item of business, which is Forger Development LLC, Monkey Brook Road Subdivision, application 25-285. This application was tabled at the March 19th meeting until following the public hearing to be held on April 16th, which is two weeks from tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a recommendation?
I'm all ears.
Okay. Can we swap item I with item II since we have the order of Timberline, one of the orders of Timberline TH here with us?
I don't think we're gonna linger too long on this one here.
Oh, okay, okay.
If we can get through it. I understand, after I wrote my notes, that a conditional agreement in the rubber of performance guarantee has been provided to the town and that the town has forwarded to our attorney?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's in route, good. And, Mr. Dunton, you were going to present a draft for a conditional, condition of approval involving the SLOTA permit requirement? Did you recall that from the?
I did recall that, yes.
It's not in the minutes?
Yes.
And you have that under control?
It's under control, yeah. We should probably coordinate on that, I think.
Okay.
That was the expectation, that we would, you and I would try and knock his on that first. I've got a version of that essentially that's planned to be submitted by the timeframes, but.
Okay.
So, we're, I think we're targeting Friday for a digital submission and then Monday.
Yeah, we have, we have, I'm sorry, it took me a second to come all back in. Yeah. I expect to see that electronically Friday. Then I'll submit Monday.
But it may make sense for me to send you those conditions of approval, the wording first. Get your, get your look at it anyway.
So, for the Planning Board, it will be my intention at the April 16th meeting to present all findings of fact and conclusions of law covering both performance standards and criteria of approval on this application. And with any luck, approve, approve or condition or deny the application at the end, by the end of the meeting on the 16th. So, our homework is to diligently go through the performance standards and the criteria of approval. Come up with some findings of fact and conclusions of law. Also, Gooch, I believe you were going to do a condition of approval for the stormwater maintenance. So, we'll be looking forward to that as well. So, that's what I would like to be able to accomplish at the next meeting, is to get that application seen through to the EN. Any questions? Hopefully, stamp season will be over by then.
So, that, the stormwater condition of approval is not ready, right? Or is it? I, I asked.
John, Gooch, have you had a chance to work on that at all or not?
Three times.
Three times?
But I don't like it yet.
Okay, and you are, okay. There is no reason, you can certainly share it with the Board as long as we don't discuss it via an email, if, that way we can get an advance copy. If you're happy with it, if not, we'll just pick it up at the next meeting. But we do need to finalize at the next meeting all the conditions of approval, if any, for that application. All right.
If it were ready, I think by tomorrow, then I could have that on.
No, the conditions of approval, how many, if any, will be presented at the next meeting and you will have to get them onto the plans for signing after the fact?
Okay, that's, that's the traditional process then. And we don't do, just so the Board adds up on this, we used to do write-ins, and we don't.
Very unprofessional.
Yeah.
That was like years ago on the fly, I don't know about you. No way, no.
I don't even think the Registry of Deeds would be happy.
Oh, yeah, they've gotten very picky about that.
Yeah, especially Augur, but they're right to on that one, so.
Okay, any other issues with the Forger LLC application that anybody wants to discuss quickly? Joel, are you all set?
I am all set.
Becky, you all, you have all the material you had so far for talking about that?
Really, so?
Okay. Let's move on to Timberline TH LLC, Timberline Road Subdivision, application number 25-286. A quick review of where we stand with this application in the way of tracking. The following items were complete, completed on the March 5th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. The type of review. Does the Planning Board have jurisdiction? Has the applicant provided proof of ownership? Has the presenter been assigned agency by the applicant? Does any Planning Board member have financial conflicts of interest or any bias towards the applicant and the project? Is an additional fee required? Presentation of the proposed development. The applicant was informed of submission deadlines for additional or revised documents and plans. The application fee was paid. A file number was assigned. Form 10.1 of submission was found to be complete. Submission forms 10.2, 10.3, and 10.4 are found to be incomplete. And a list of deficiencies was provided orally to Mr. Dunton, who has taken those for action. The Planning Board then found the application to be incomplete and ensured that the applicant had a comprehensive list of what was required. That's where we left off. Has the additional fee been paid?
The $10,000 is in the safe.
Okay. Cash?
Yeah, sure. Girls are going shopping later, don't tell them.
Does Becky need the check number?
I can go get that.
I would like to go through the missing items list with the Board. Pull it up here. So, the first page of the revision material submitted by Mr. Dunton was a letter to the Board.
So, should this be edited to, right, to not need this part?
Yeah, because I don't know.
What he submitted, if that's my.
That is, by the way, that is correct, and that's part of the revision.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do not see the check in the safe, that doesn't mean it's on.
You're missing it on the shopping trip.
I am missing it on the shopping trip. Loretta may have already taken care of that and put it in an escrow account. I'll have to get that information for the next meeting.
If she has a check number, let me know.
Okay, yep.
Let's see, item number one on deficient on 10.2 was detail on the total floor area. Bottom of page one does not include the existing real estate office, the existing real estate office is, or will be no more, so that becomes a mute point. The perspective change to the parking easement needs to be recorded, amended to the existing cross-easement, and not just an agreement. All right, so, in your package, there was no agreement, or the easement was not there. It has since been filed and recorded with the.
Register.
With the Registry of Deeds, six pages of it. Well, I don't know, does anybody, probably need paper, cotton?
I can make copies.
Either, not right now, but the Board sends us an electronic link, oh, you got that?
If I, if it's the Board's planning.
Sure.
There, it's in the form of two separate documents. The first, just to save a little bit of reenact, the first is the elimination of the time easements, the time parking easements. The second is agreement of access to the Sunday River Road, or Skiway Road, sorry. And cleanup of reciprocal back and forth on that for Sunday River and TH LLC, Timberline TH.
This, this one, I'm going to. Joel, our discussion that we had might be.
Good.
Mr. Dunton, will you give us a quick summary of the amendment to the cross-easement?
Yeah, the cross-easement is basically untangled, neither, neither Sunday River nor Timberline TH LLC are encumbered by their half of the time easement.
Okay, so that would be paragraph number two, release of parking easement by Timberline. And paragraph number three, release of parking easement by Sunday River. And that includes not only the parking along Skiway Road, but also parking lot 3. On the screen?
Yeah, that's, that's addressed in number four.
Yeah.
Notwithstanding any provision herein, contrary to the Sunday River may, or to the contrary, Sunday River may regulate flow of traffic on the Skiway Road and access the road to the lot number 3 parking lot. That's located within the Sunday River easement, shown on exhibit C, cross.
That paragraph four is of interest. Anybody have questions on paragraphs two, three, or four of the amendment to the cross-easement? Last chance, any questions right now on paragraphs two, three, or four? Are we clear on what we're, what's happening here? Pretty clear. As a recap, the original cross-easement from 2003, the, what is now the Timberline property and Sunday River had time of use parking along Skiway Road. Depending on the time of day, one party had use of the other party's parking spaces, as well as access to parking on, overflow parking on Lot 3 of Sunday River. And it appears that through paragraphs three, two, three, and four, those easements and encumbrances for parking have been deleted or null. Any questions for anybody? Okay, no. Okay, let's move on here. Got any more ratification, no representation? All right, so, that answers one big question.
There is a second document there.
The second, the second filing with the Office of County of Deeds, which is a new easement agreement between Sunday River and Timberline dated March 24th. Mr. Dunton, if you'd give us the 25-word summary, please?
Yeah, that, that covers basically the permission for Timberline TH LLC to utilize the Skiway Road as access point for the, for the development.
For ingress and egress. It talks specifically of driveway entrance, which one are, which one does it, or is it, is it, or is it addressing all?
The driveway entrance is the main entrance. The, the other entrance.
If you point on that diagram.
These are the, these are the driveway entrances. And then this entrance is actually on land that's owned by TH LLC. That was the language. That was in the, the paragraph four of the first document, basically saying this is acknowledged as Sunday River gets to keep the rights on this. And, uh, but the applicant can install a gate as long as it doesn't interfere with Sunday River's use of the lot.
So that, that is the entrance way up through that lot right there, that crosses that piece of land?
That goes up to lot three.
Yeah, it goes up the existing access road right now to lot three. Okay, so basically this new easement then is addressing those, the two southern driveway entrances.
And I, I actually think it's just this one. I think I'm visible because this is the one that, see, there's a, there's a portion.
Yep, yep, yep. Because the other one is on your, is on, is on the applicant's land.
They already had, had deeded rights to use Skiway Road as part of the, the deed for the, for the parcel, so it's
So it's basically addressing that, that southeastern most driveway, which is how I interpreted it.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. And all that is said in
In a lot of legal words.
Yeah.
Yes, even, even my AI app can digest it, so. Alright, questions on the new easement agreement between the applicant and Sunday River? So in summary, then concerns that the board had as to encumbrances from the parking areas had pretty much dissolved. And so the only encumbrance that is on the property right now that affects density calculation is the already depicted access road to parking lot three and a sliver of Skiway Road there in the southwest corner. And I believe you've already calculated the square footage of that.
Yes.
And I dare say by removal of the real estate building and 20,000 square feet allotted to that for density, you, there's probably no issues now with the 11 units that you would like to install, so I think density has density is been, been solved in that.
So we did provide a plan as requested by the board.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
There is one more piece of paper in that packet.
There is one more sheet of paper on that packet. Okay, we will okay, so let the record show that the applicant submitted a amendment to the cross easement dated March 24th and recorded in the Oxford County Deed, book number 5863, page 385. And as well as a new easement agreement between the applicant and Sunday River Skiway Corporation dated March 24th, 2025 and recorded in book 5863, page 390. Last, the applicant submitted a letter from Franklin Savings Bank dated March 20th, 2025, addressed to the town of Newry Planning Board in reference to Timberline TH LLC condominium project, Timberline Drive, Newry, Maine. To whom it may concern, this letter is to confirm that Franklin Savings Bank acknowledges that the principles of Timberline TH LLC have a viable proposal to secure the necessary financing for the infrastructure as well as the full construction project of residential condominium units at Timberline Drive, Newry, Maine. This letter does not grant final approval. Only the client has demonstrated the capacity and the ability to secure such approval. A final approval will be subject to receipt of final appraisal, title work for the real estate being approved, and securing such approvals from the local municipality regarding the project. To me, sounds like a catch 22. Please don't hesitate to call if you should have any questions or concerns at 207-364-7866, extension 2116, or I could be emailed at the following email. Signed, Jennifer L. Merrill, Vice President of Commercial Lending. And Mr. Dutton, the intent of this letter is?
So the intent of this letter, uh, I talked to John about the, uh, the performance guarantee and which strategy we'd like to, to employ on that. Getting ahead of that question being asked, I assume, tonight. And, uh, the intent would be to, to have an irrevocable line of credit.
Okay, we, let me cut you off and we will, we will pick that up when we get to that one next meeting. I thought that's what that letter was for, but just wanted to make sure. Alright, any questions on the three pieces of, of correspondence of documents that were submitted? Alright, moving on to deficiencies on Form 10.2. The proposed declaration of condominium is incomplete and that it does not include existing structure or the parcel in Exhibit A. The legal description of the land is blank. Well, the structure will disappear, and I believe you publicly fixed the legal description of the land. Did you not? I saw the, I saw the, the revised.
Yeah, I believe you did. Just get that, I'll get it from there.
Item 15, missing driveway approval from Sunday River. Does the town require an entrance permit off of Timberline Road?
No.
No, okay. Missing any proof of application for stormwater and drinking water. Okay, so we have he submitted in that package the application to the Department of Health and Human Services for the drinking water. Three wells, I believe. The existing well plus two new ones. And there was a stormwater maintenance plan that was all submitted. Joel, you'll be able to submit that to Joel Palmer once we find the application complete?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on Form 10.2 and its outstanding items?
Um, in the request for preliminary approval for community public water system. Number three, it says, I don't know. Condominium 11 units at four bedrooms per unit. Total of 44 bedrooms. Shouldn't that be 55?
Don't, they, they are four bedroom units.
Oh, I thought they were five.
They started off at five, but they've been amended since. They're now four bedroom.
Yeah, the yard protection plans are also four bedrooms.
Which wasn't included in the package, so.
Alright, just catch there, Gooch. Anything else? Meredith? Bruce? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that then Form 10.2 is complete.
How do I make a motion that Form 10.2 is complete?
Motion and a second. Filing Form 10.2 is complete has been made. Any further discussion from the board? Speak now. Hearing no further discussion, I will entertain a vote.
One, two.
Three. The record show that Form 10.2 has been found complete by unanimous vote. Moving on to Form 10.3. Marking and delineation of parking areas missing on Plan C 2.1. Each nine-by-18 parking area needs to show on the plan and revised plan does show the parking. Anybody have any questions on that? If you need time to find the plan, the revised plan 3.2.1 in your package and look at it, please do so now. At the very end.
2.1.
C 2.1? C 2.1. Two, you're getting close. Hey, there we go. Alright. You notice that, uh, on either side of the three structures that they have in very fine point lines drawn in the parking spaces. Questions, comments?
I have a question. Buildings, well, all, all three buildings. It looks like one garage bay for two doors, or is there going to be a partition separating those? And they'll be two separate doors? Overhead doors.
You talking about in the center?
Yeah, that one. Same thing for building two and the double unit down on building one.
I presume there would be, uh, there would be partitions.
Yeah, but we're not going to have shared parking, right?
We can see in the, in the architectural rendering, there's a column there that has fire, firewall and everything separated.
Okay, good.
So every, everything that, that's in shaded gray is all paid?
Correct.
There will be this. And, uh, of interest is with the deletion of the existing ex-real estate building, the applicant has inserted several additional parking lots off of Skiway Road and has designated those for use by the developer in the future. Oh, down, oh, okay, that is, okay, I see.
So for the recording, it was never discussed. The applicant hasn't presented the fact that we've revised this, um, plan to be just the 11 units. And that, like, perhaps they want to
Good point.
talk about what we've changed from the original
Let's backtrack. At the last meeting, the applicant asked to proceed with the review. And since it hadn't been completed, that they would be able to make some modifications to the plan other than what the board has asked. And we also discussed that there was an issue with density that if we had gotten to reviewing the standards, that density would not be met and the application would probably have failed. With that said, Mr. Dutton, please, for the record, announce the changes that you had done to the site.
Sure. And I suppose also for the record, we're done with mainland development consultants, so that tape recorder knows my voice. I did, I was guilty of jumping right in there, too. It's already, you know, sort of been discussed, but the, the real estate office that's existing is, is proposed to be removed and no longer part of the, the development proposal. So that's, that's the major change with the, with the plans. Where the, uh, where the parking for that office was and where the office was is proposed to be regraded, so that's now presented in the, in the plans as, as new and improved grading. Showing, uh,
Would you point that out in the further work, please?
That is on this plan. So now there's a, a more gentle slope, basically all sloping down toward the like the, held against the, the paved timber route area. This is where the, where the parking for the real estate office was and, uh, and the buildings as well. And so that area is proposed to be smooth and, uh, and vegetated.
So
Along with obviously a few plan, you know, minor plan updates.
Ramifications then being that with the removal of the existing structure, that freed up 20,000 square feet of density that had to be allocated to that building. And with that new allowance, the 11 units can fit onto the lot and meet the density requirements per U D R O section 3 B or C, whatever the table line uses.
Lot, hang on.
Everybody follow me on that?
Trying to.
F, 23F dimensional requirements.
23F, so, so the U D R O says that in the resort development district, for multi-unit housing that is sewed, you have to have 10,000 square feet per dwelling unit. However, for a single standalone building, you needed to have 20,000 square feet. So when calculating the original density, you had to, you had to account for the 20,000 square feet allotted to that building, and that put the, the density was over the limit. And the applicant made the decision to remove the existing building in order to preserve the proposed 11 dwelling units in three buildings. Everybody with me on that?
Would you now fortify?
And would you now fort, and I think ever since, eh, since the only thing was five bedrooms was on the pre-application grounds. Okay. So
Oh, can I ask a question just out of curiosity? Because I didn't really scrutinize every single page of these maps. So I'm looking at this thing here, it says new tree line TYP or whatever.
What plan are you on?
I'm on C 2 dash point one, the one we've been on. So you, so you, and I'm assuming that this kind of fat line right there is a, is a head row or something? That, uh, going up
Right here?
No, go, keep going over toward the right. Right there. That, come down, that fat line right there, yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, no, that's, that denotes our, our ripper.
That's ripper.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. And then I see, so behind that, that says the new tree line?
Yes.
And then it goes up into the privacy fence that goes along the border line to the other, to the boundary, corner boundary to the left? And then, so is there also that, is that new tree line extending that, that whole boundary line too? Because I see it looks like it comes around, um, to the property line on the left-hand side.
That tree line is pretty much existing on that back property line up against lots two and lot one. That's pretty much where it is now.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the notation is essentially if we, if we show it changed as part of, uh, tree removal
Yeah.
to make the project go, then we show the existing tree line on the existing conditions plans, and then the new tree line is, is on the, the the development, the proposed development plans or the, uh, site layout plan.
Yeah, well, because I, because I see it says new tree line. So, so, so that's from the corner on Timberline then up to the privacy fence already. That's going to be the new installation, but the existing privacy fence, the, the trees have already been there, I know that. So, but that, so that basically stops where it meets the privacy fence, and that, that would be all new tree line in there.
I don't, there's not intent to, uh, to plant new trees in that area. That would be, that's where the trees are currently, and they'll be cleared back to that point.
Oh, alright, because it just says new tree line, so I imagine, I thought. It sounds to me like you're planting trees there, but that's actually
That's the limit of the clearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what you're saying is new line, new, new location of a lot of trees.
Yeah, new extent of.
Yes, new trees. On the upper left-hand corner, it says three spaces reserved for Murray Residential Realty LLC for deed. So you're in the, the parking spaces that you have delegated.
So you're, in the, the parking spaces that you have delegated, are those three included or not included?
Deliberated to whom?
For the.
For the units?
For the units.
Yeah, they're, they're not included in those.
Okay. They're not included in the calculation either. The, the, the D that transferred the lot from the old owner to Timberline had a provision that the previous owner retained the right to free parking spaces perpetuity or, I think it was perpetuity, for ninety-nine years, close. And, but, is, the location of that parking lot was up to the new owner. So that's what those three lots are for. And along those lines, the new, what used to be out in the parking area in front of the old to be gone real estate building where, where brick is pointing, those, several of those parking spaces, I believe eleven of them, are going to be reserved for the developer after the developer has finished with the project and has moved on, but will retain use of those lots for their use. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
All right, any other questions, observations? I will entertain a motion that Form ten point three is.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that Form ten point three is complete on application two five dash two eight six.
I'll second that.
That, a motion and a second to find submission Form ten point three for application twenty five dash two eighty-six has been made. Any final discussions with the board on Form ten point three? Hearing none, I will take the vote.
One.
Two. Three. Let the record show that submission Form ten point three has been found complete unanimously by the board. Moving on to Form ten point four. One item there was already covered by ten point three, and that was the plan showing the encumbrances. Phasing plan. If the applicant intends on phasing the development, then a phasing plan with itemization of required improvements associated with each phase. I saw a phasing plan, Mr. Thun, but I did not see an itemization of required improvements associated with each phase.
And that the itemization in my notes, but what, what we had discussed was just the plan.
To give you a bit of history, we, the board has had, has had issue with previous phasing plans not being descriptive enough as to what all has to be done for that phase. And therefore, the board decides a visual diagram of phases one and phase two. The, we need to have an itemization of what required improvements will be part of phase one and what will be part of phase two. That includes not only the road access, driveways, parking lots, but also stormwater management. And I believe at the last meeting it was passed that those itemizations should have been noted on that plan itself. And if she plenty of white space, we probably can do that.
So we don't think the, the visual here is descriptive enough?
Well, tell me about the stormwater.
Stormwater is part of the.
Did it just magically appear at the, at the boundary, or is it coming off of what will be phase two? You have a bound, the boundary, the boundary between phase one and phase two. What hap, what happens to the, the existing stormwater that's going to come off of what will be phase two, does not that need to be managed as part of phase one?
So as, as part of phase one, but the stormwater management pond would be constructed to buildings and then obviously the infrastructure shown here as, as phase one. Phase two stormwater, the, the lot can obviously drain in that direction, but this pond is already sized and built fully for the full build-out.
So what you just said needs to be itemized on the plan.
And I don't see culvert, I'm looking at page C four point one. This culvert coming from this sloped land here, is that going to be installed as part of phase one? All this drainage swale coming down through in between phase two building one and the phase one building two and three. I'm just wondering, where is all this water going? Was, you know, that was one of my questions.
Got it. Yeah, so the culvert is, the culvert is part of that, and you drew the line intentionally that include the, you can see the little, the little riprap outlet there. It's intended to include the, the culvert.
Joel, since you're going to be the inspecting official.
Yep.
The board would like to know if you're comfortable with the, with the phasing plan is, as is, or do you need additional itemization?
I would like additional itemization because I'm just, I'm just really concerned about where this water, this water, how is all that flowing? I mean, if we're not working on this part of the project, are we sloping this land? How is all this water making it to this culvert and this drainage here? That's, that's my concern.
As opposed to going like towards the, the access road to lot three?
Going to lot three, right out to skiway, taking out their, 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 all their hard work that they're going to do on the parking lots. I mean, I don't want to see everything they do when I'm looking at four point one, everything they're doing here, if we're not incorporating any of the stormwater, where's all the, where's all this going? So, yeah.
So if the applicant was to include stormwater management for the entire parcel and phase one, and just leave the remaining required improvements for phase two, such as the parking.
Yeah, the fine grading, the dumpster pad, all of that, I don't need, the foundation, obviously I don't need, but I am worried about how all the storm drainage is going to come off of that and then into what is so far detailed as phase one.
Can Mr. Thun, comments?
I'm su, I'm sure there's a way to either show it in plan form or describe it in, in words. Honestly, my worry is that, frankly, I, I would prefer not to have completeness held up by that, by that item and, and move to a, you know, to a subsequent meeting. I'm happy to prepare a, a description to your, you know, to your satisfaction, Joel, or a plan that shows, you know, how that, how that's achieved. And I can, yeah, we can follow up with this in a little as, as part of perhaps review criteria, maybe at the next, I don't know, that's what I'm thinking out loud.
I'm happy with it being considered in the review criteria, but as I'm fond of saying, I don't get a vote.
I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't really have an issue with it either, I mean, because it's going to get put down, or it's not going to get put down, but it doesn't get approved anyway, so it's got to, it's got to happen, so I don't, I don't have any issue with that.
I'm a very visual person and I can read a set of plans, I don't have any problem with that, and I know there's going to be transit set up on site that I can go up there and stand there and, and walk through with a pole and see everything that gets graded. That I'm all comfortable with, but just to meet the criteria for you and like you said, not to hold up completeness, I'm happy if that plan follows through with review, but I'll leave that up to the board.
Gooch, comments?
Nope, I'm fine.
Rob?
I, I do have a question, this is related, since we did deal with phasing before, that was my first time. I know one of the things we needed to have on the phasing was the approximate timeline. Is that no longer an issue?
Good point.
It is a good point, can we discuss that now or under performance?
It's part of the phasing plan should include completion.
Obviously, any notes about completion?
It is U D R O completion, but I thought that the idea was in the phasing plan was to say phases will occur approximately twenty-five seven.
The ordinance requires, the ordinance required the project to commence within twenty-four months of approval. And for the project to be completed within eighteen months of commencement of work. If you were to phase a project and carry that logic through, then it would be, one could assume that phase one would have to commence within twenty-four months of approval and be completed within eighteen months. And phase two would then have to be started within twenty-four months of the completion of phase one and completed within eighteen months after the start of work on phase two.
Agreed, my, my line of thinking is, I think, or yours is, Mr. Baker, which is that the intent of the phasing plan is to follow the, the timing allotted in the U D R O.
Okay, so, Mr. Thun, we will have two conditions of approval. I'll write down my notes here first. In order to honor your desire to move this application along towards completeness, the board will enter, will probably apply a condition of approval to include the stormwater management for the entire parcel to be completed as phase one. And the board will have a condition of approval outlining the phase timing, I just described. Are you comfortable with both of those?
I am, yes, absolutely.
Rob, does that meet your requirements for phase timing?
Yeah, I think the only thing I came up last time was we need some sort of.
Start and end date.
Within the overall, I forget what it is, there's a, there's a big chunk, if you're doing it in phases, there's a big chunk of time, you can do the whole thing, but the idea was a phasing plan would be a plan for when, approximately.
So John, if that condition of approval is approved by the board, which I believe it probably will be.
Yeah, phasing is, phasing is timing.
We can drag out all the phases.
You will have twenty-four months to commence the project. If you do not commence within that twenty-four months, the application becomes null and void and you get to go through all this all over again.
Two years, man.
If that isn't motivation to get you to build it, I don't know what is.
As long as it's approved, I'll be up there with a shovel.
Okay.
Get it going.
Let's see, what else? Okay. And we'll get to the performance guarantees, that was a part of the condition of approval anyway. Any other questions, discussions, comments on submission Form ten point four to the board? So in summary, there will be at least two conditions of approval to review and approve when we get to that point. The first one will be in essence to require stormwater management for the entire parcel to be completed as part of phase one of the project. And the second condition of approval will be to detail the phase time, construction of, construction timing on each phase. And essentially, each phase will have twenty-four months to commence. And once construction has started, that clock stops and a new clock, clock starts, which is eighteen months long. And we'll get, I'll get those drafted for the next meeting. Okay, with that said, I will entertain a motion that Form, submission Form ten point four is complete.
I make a motion that Form ten point four is complete.
I'll second that motion. And a, a motion and a second has been made, that submission Form ten point four is complete. Any final discussions with the board? Hearing no final discussions, I will take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. The board has found submission Form ten point four to be complete by unanimous vote. I will make a motion to the board that the application twenty-five dash two eighty-six submitted by Timberline T H L L C is complete. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second, finding application twenty-five dash two eighty-six to be complete has been made. Any final discussions? Hearing no final discussions, I will take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Let the record show that application twenty-five dash two eighty-six has been found complete. That starts a sixty-day clock for the planning board to review and either approve, approve with conditions or deny the applicant. However, that is modified by our ordinance because this is a major subdivision and therefore a public hearing will be required. And by the U D R O, the board will have thirty days following the public hearing to find the application complete, approve the application, approve the application with conditions or disapprove the application.
I'm just getting ready.
The available date for a public hearing would be the first meeting in May, I believe?
May seventh?
May seventh. That would give the town sufficient time to legally put out notices. Is May seventh a Google date for the applicant?
Yes. Oh, I thought you told me, sorry. I thought that's what he was waiting for.
Good for both of us to sign off on that, so that's appropriate. Uh, yes.
Okay. So let the record show that, that one, this is a major subdivision and therefore for the U D R O, a public hearing is required. That public hearing will be held on, what was that, May seventh?
Yes.
May seventh at six A M.
P M. I won't be here, so I don't care, you do whatever you want.
Six P M. Yeah, that's, that's very, that's very wrong. Okay. Let's move on to.
Do, do, do you need to vote on that?
I'm sorry?
My sheet said, sheet said you need to vote on that.
Oh, okay. I.
I make a motion that.
I love it when my board corrects me.
Sorry.
All right, go ahead, Gooch.
I make a motion that the public hearing for application twenty-five two eight six five.
Six.
Six. Is scheduled for May seventh at six P M.
At this location. At this location.
At this location, yes.
I'll second. A motion and a second to hold a public hearing on application twenty-five dash two eighty-six to be held on the seventh of May twenty twenty-five at six P M at the Newbury Town Hall has been made. Any discussions? Hearing no discussions, I will take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Let the record show that the board has voted in favor of holding a public hearing on this date.
So was I just out in space for a little bit and I missed the whole thing about the site visit?
That's true.
So, okay, well, I have it after the, that's why.
Yeah, you, you do, and I, I went straight, gives up, blew away everything. Yeah, you do, and I, I went straight, gives a blew away everything to recording. All right. Let's talk about site visits. Site visit allow, provides an opportunity for board members to see the project conceptually upfront, close and personally. Uh, you know, on this project, it would give us the opportunity to visually see driveway entrances and how they will blend or meld into existing roads and traffic patterns. It will also give us the opportunity to visualize changes to the existing contour of the parcel. If you recall from the drawings that were submitted by the applicant, there appears to be some considerable rating and changes to the contour. It will also allow us to visually see the runaway easement that is a major player in this application. All that said and done, it's obvious that the chair is in favor of a site visit. I will entertain discussion from other members of the board.
Well, I'd be happy to go up and look at it and check it out and see.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be at for it.
Let's do it.
Okay. I, I would propose to do that at five PM on May seventh.
Yep.
Which is one hour before our meeting here. Uh, is, with travel time, is that sufficient time for everybody or should we do this at say like four thirty?
Five should.
Five?
It's not a big site.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I will therefore make the motion that we hold a site visit. Well, first of all, excuse me, I'm being rude. Mr. Dutton, can we, can you accommodate a five PM afternoon early rendezvous at the site on the seventh of May?
We can.
Therefore, I will make the motion that the board can conduct a site visit of the parcel to be held at five PM on the seventh of May. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded that a site visit at five PM on the seventh of May be held. What preparations would we like the applicant to do prior to our site visit? I like my coffee with tea and sugar.
I was gonna say coffee and soda. Cause I heard some beer.
Um, no, seriously.
Can the driveways be staked?
Seriously, uh, some rough stakes showing the easement boundary. Also, uh, some survey stakes showing the entrances that you're planning.
Set a re-entrance.
Yep. Maybe some, some surveyor paint around where the dry pond's gonna go.
Hopefully, we're not still snowing.
And Joel, even though you will not be able to grace us with your presence at this site visit,
No, we'll not.
what would you suggest that we look at?
Uh, that, those, the driveways and the pond with my first two, the easement is all you guys.
Okay. Meredith, anything that you would like to? Okay. Rob?
I likely won't be able to do it to work, but I may try.
We'll miss you if you can't. Anything that you, if you do make it, that you'd like to?
Honestly, I have nothing particular on it, so I can see what you guys are doing.
Gooch?
Oh. Would love to see it.
Bruce, you'd like to look at your tree line or not?
Yeah, I want to see the trees.
See if there's any mables.
All right. Never can tell.
A motion and a second for the board to conduct a site visit of the parcel on the seventh of May at five PM has been made. We've had our discussion. I will take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that the vote had, the board has voted unanimously for a site visit to be held at five PM on May seventh. And Rick, if you could take those requests for.
I have good notes on what I'm saying.
Appreciate that.
The other thing I, I like to do these days with our technology, I'll bring an iPad with me. We can see exactly where we are on the site on top of our planned plan.
Okay.
So you can, will be able to navigate via that.
They'll probably wait for it.
Like, like this? The, the iPad is about as, as big as we typically bring to the field.
Okay. Let's move on now to performance guarantee. The applicant has indicated that they will provide an irrevocable letter of credit as per U D R O section twenty-one dot A dot three. That, and John and Rick, this has to be issued by a financial institution. The letter, irrevocable letter of credit has to be approved by the town's select board. If this irrevocable letter of credit must also include a construction schedule, this is all outlined in U D R O section twenty-one B for your reference, references. But the performance guarantee needs to come with a construction schedule, cost estimates for each major phase of construction, taking the phasing into consideration, provisions for inspection, provisions for release of part or all of the performance guarantee, and a set default date. Again, all of that is, is in black and white in the section twenty-one B of the U D R O for your references.
And the timing on that is, uh, following, following approvals that would be conditioned, that would be a condition of approval, I assume?
Yes.
And then, then that agreement is drafted, yes?
Actually, it probably doesn't even need to be a.
It would just be a finding.
A, we probably make it a condition of approval, but it probably doesn't have to be a condition of approval. It just has to be in the inspectors, inspecting officials' hand five days prior to the start of construction. However, uh, the town administrator is reviewing what reviews would have to be conducted at, on the town end of the irrevocable letter of credit, i.e. lawyer review, financial advisor, accounting review, et cetera. So it's not going to be a quick process. So, I would. I, the, the sooner you can get the irrevocable, at least a draft or the, oh, right, there is no such thing as a draft of the irrevocable letter of credit. The letter of credit and the accompanying documents that is required by the U D R O, the sooner then we can get it to the town consultants for review and then to the select board for approval.
Yes.
Okay?
I don't know how financial institutions do things, but if it's undated, would that be enough of a draft, but we could still review it, town attorney, or, or all that stuff? Because they don't want to give it to us too early.
The irrevocable letter of credit is a letter that shows that the applicant has a dedicated line of credit that can be used for no other purposes other than its intended expenditure, in this case, the project. Whether or not the financial institution wants to extend that credit tomorrow, or if it wants to hold that credit until five days prior to the start of construction, I don't know.
Okay.
That's.
So essentially, it's, it's not an item in this review process other than to note that it will be required and then following approval.
It will be required. Certainly, the board likes to have all these loose ends tied up prior to and tries to shy away from conditions of approval, but there are exceptions.
Okay.
I, I think what I've seen in the past is that the, the lenders are, don't have a lot of imagination for, let's pretend like
No, they don't.
they get approval. And that was, that's kind of the, you know, this letter is, is bank speak for, yeah, we intend to, to lend and make that letter of credit, but we want to see the approval first, and that's, that's how they wanted it.
As I said, it was a catch twenty-two there.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
So, so it, it sounds, it sounds like there will be a third, at least a third condition of approval that will be that the irrevocable letter of credit will have to be accepted by the town prior to commencement of construction. However, the supporting documents certainly would be appreciated prior to us taking the final vote on approving or disapproving the project. And that would be the, uh, construction schedule, cost estimate, provisions for inspection, provisions for release of part of the performance guarantee, and a set default date, which would probably be the eighteen months after commencement of construction type of thing. Comments from Meredith? Rob? Gooch?
Oh.
Good, good, good.
Don't mind.
All right. Does the applicant have any waivers of performance standards as allowed for U D R O section twenty-two dot B?
No.
Okay. Let the record show that the applicant is not submitting any waivers for performance standards as allowed for U D R O section twenty-two dot B. Does the applicant have any waivers of required improvements as allowed for U D R O twenty-two point C, I should say waiver request?
No.
Okay. Let the record show that the applicant will not be making any waiver requests for required improvements as allowed for U D R O twenty-two dot C. At this point, final comments, questions from the board? Mr. Dutton, you have your marching orders?
We do.
Are you comfortable, you need clarification with anything?
Uh, no, I think we got it. John, that's your opportunity to do, you have anything that?
No, the only thing was the, the bank letter, which you said was a catch twenty-two, they, what they told me was until you get approval, we can't, even though they're going to, but they can't say it until the project. They can't say they're gonna give money for a project that's not approved.
I get it.
Yeah.
Chicken or the egg?
Yeah, it's kind of like you say, catch twenty-two.
We will do the, we will do the condition of approval. There's no problem. There's plenty of white space on the final plan, so. Fill that one up.
Sure.
Okay, um, at this point then, I will table the application pending the site visit for, scheduled for May seventh at five PM and the public hearing scheduled for six o'clock on the seventh of May. Following the public hearing, the board will take up conditions of approval. And I would like to start to develop findings of fact and conclusions of law for performance standards and criteria of approval. And with any luck and due diligence from all the board members in preparing for this, we will be able to find the application complete. I mean, correct myself, applica, approve the application, approve the application with conditions or deny the application at the next meeting. And that is my lofty goal.
On May seventh.
On May seventh, not the next meeting, but May, yeah, please, May seventh, I stand corrected. So like, it was basically a month to do our homework. Oh, yes, that's right. It's a month and five, month and a week, five weeks. Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Public notices.
I'm just gonna say the same. So I drop the notice, send to a butters, send it to you, you get it in the papers.
I, yeah, all of that. I'll take care of the site visit and the public hearing notice for the newspapers.
Speaking of, speaking of notice to a butters, please, if you have not done so, for both this application and the previous application, make sure that we have courtesy copies that we can include in.
Yeah, just email me a couple of copies, one, one for each project that you're working on right now.
So then you do a certified mailing, copies of the certified notices.
Yeah, we need this. We need that, but, but I, the actual, since we're not drafting a letter, I would like a copy that, a digital copy that Joel sent you.
Perfect.
Right, and, and Joel can then forward that to, thank you for inclusion and whatnot.
And we do, it's on my list, uh, for, I know, we're not talking about the previous project, but to have the, the cards from the registered mail. That should be part of it.
Okay, Joel, since the application's been found complete, please forward the stormwater management plan to Glora Palmer for their review. And you can use the request from the that we had for the previous application as to which parts of the U D R O's we want addressed, both the performance standard in, in, for stormwater in section thirteen as well as, uh, section fourteen, well, it gets to be fifteen for roads. No, fourteen, fourteen roads, but there's no parting much in that way. And I don't believe we have anything for Perkins Thompson.
Not today.
The easement is taken care of that. Okay. Mr. Dutton, John, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Agenda.
Yeah.
You have no findings of fact?
No.
Do we have any?
Hold on, please, safety first.
Okay, we have no findings of fact?
That's next week. I turned away some.
We have no new business, correct?
No, no other new business.
Any new business on the horizon?
No.
Besides your vacation?
None. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Joel, if you give us your reports, please.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, we, I have two reports to give. One is just, uh, informational only. Uh, Mubeck gets upgraded from the two thousand fifteen standards we use currently. Mubeck is the main uniform building and energy code. We are jumping up to twenty twenty-one.
Oh, you're skipping over eighteen?
Eighteen. We're allowed to by law. We're allowed to skip one full cycle, so, and I'm actually going to training April tenth just to do the highlights from fifteen to twenty-one. They'll give us the highlights of what's changing. So I go to training next week for that, yeah? And then we did do a pre-construction meeting today with our town engineer and D E P, the developer and mainland consultants, developers. Uh, we just talked.
The roots is shared?
The pines.
The pines, okay.
Yeah. We talked, uh, the erosion control is in place. We walked that. Concrete washout area has been designated and Steve will be sending reports to us weekly. Right now, it's just clear to three.
For, for bridge?
Yes.
Yeah.
And any of our, when they start?
Uh, uh, the developer said that they should have plans to us in the next couple of weeks. I told them I would be away for most of the month of May and the faster they've gotten to me, the faster I can get to the projects.
Okay, so they need to give you plans for building permitting or?
Building permit, yes.
Okay.
And subsurface wastewater.
Okay, and, and they can start to clear?
They've already cleared.
They've already cleared.
Yeah, they've already cleared.
And, but the foundation has to wait for the plan, building to?
Correct. Yeah, there's no, they haven't even started digging.
Interesting.
This will be building number three inside the pines.
Okay. Oh, that's a. Oh, that's a, well, Mr. Dunton is here, um. Add dressing.
Add dressing, another ordinance for you to look at.
Okay.
For, for just the project we were just discussing, the one that got voted completed tonight.
Actually, well, the other one, Monkey Brook would be easy, but you gotta come up with nine-one-one addresses for Monkey Brook.
I, I did that.
I know.
Okay, uh, but I don't do that till you're building for me either.
Okay.
Okay, um, my concern for the addressing ordinance, we have to go with the ordinance that's most strict. Because. Take a read of the ordinance, I'm gonna start there, take a read of the ordinance, it's available on our website.
That's separate from the U D R O, it's its own.
It's its own standalone ordinance, I, there's a possibility that these roads would have to be named. So, I want you to take a read of the addressing ordinance and we'll have a conversation tomorrow or next week.
And then in the event that they don't have to be named, it would probably be beneficial that they do be named, I would say.
I can't do that, that's not how, it's not how the nine-one-one ordinance works, you don't get to name a private road just because you want to name your private road.
The apartments, they're, they're be, it'd be like having an apartment, so you'd have.
Right, right, so.
X, you're eight Main Street apartment one or unit one, eight Main Street, unit three, eight Main Street, unit four.
So, the conversation will have this, is this a timberline, units one through eight? And then, if that's the case, then what are we calling this? So there's some confusion around just the way this is laid out, because this isn't just one continuous road. So I just, I want to talk that through with you.
Okay.
For the benefit of your client and for my first responders, huh?
Yeah, that's.
Try to make this as easy as possible.
Yeah, let's get it, get it straight.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Any, uh, is your new discussion or open discussion?
Yeah, we were discussing last, the, about roads and how the town roads are perhaps not up to standards they ought to be. The Sunday River Road beyond where it branches to the Skeway Road, has got over four hundred lots on it.
Correct.
In my neighborhood?
Well, somewhere in your neighborhood, yes. A lot of them are up Monkey Brook, but there's a lot of them beyond this, the covered bridge. And, yeah, we gotta think about our own roads.
We have started that research here in the office, um, these are old county roads, um, that, that, you know, have been added on to in the case of Monkey Brook with a private road. And then Sunday River Road has been, you know, all lots have been added beyond and around it. We are researching it, is the best I can give you right now, and we're, we're digging in, because, well, I have found, I have figured out Monkey Brook, that one was easy, because we only own so much of it. But Sunday River Road being an old county road has been, been a challenge.
It, um, it, impact or on the planning board is minimal, because it's not something that we have.
Correct, we did get that question answered.
Authority over.
Right, we don't have, they, we, so we can apply standards to private roads per our ordinance, those same standards per our attorney don't apply to municipal roads. Rick, Rick did explain that also.
Oh, that was just my guess.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Gooch, you and I are slated to be on the comprehensive plan committee. And the topic of road, current inventory of road structure. And, and more importantly, anticipated future needs. I would hope to be a very important part of that comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Which will be interesting, because it's a committee.
Right. Roads.
Are grades gonna come into this at all, road grade?
Not on municipal roads, because we're not gonna upgrade them, like, you almost guaranteed we won't upgrade them.
So then, what, I mean, I can, what, what's the, per limit on road grade, is it fifteen percent?
It depends, in our subdivision and site plan, that has a, that has a defined, I don't know if it's fifteen, but typical fifteen.
Right, well, I, I remember that kind of got slipped under and passed, you know.
Everybody says that, but you all have an opportunity to vote on it, so I don't know why everybody keeps saying it got slipped in, but go ahead.
Well, no, no, so, so, but I'm just curious, I mean, because people complain about the, you know, the steep, the steepness of the grades.
Yeah.
And, and you were, and was like twelve, it was either twelve and then there are certain sections you could go fifteen, I mean, I'm an Alex.
For, for a definitive set.
For a hundred and fifty feet.
Right, yeah.
Right, and, and, and there was something about that, like in Fuzzy's subdivision, um, that, that there was.
We're not talking about anybody else's subdivision.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying, like, you know, but there, there's, uh, uh, there, there was a question about the steepness of the grades.
Yes.
So, um.
Yeah, they're always.
And the challenges of those, of those grade steepnesses.
That may be something the comprehensive plan takes into account.
Well, that, well, now you're talking road standards, construction standards, which is, is section fourteen of the U D R O.
Right.
That is per due to the board, and if there is a need to revise those grades. Have at it.
They're challenging me with my project?
Yes. And that would.
I can make an oath.
That would have, you, you, Bruce, you, what I would suggest or I'm asking you to is to define more precisely. What in the section fourteen is, needs to be reviewed. And if so, we will have to start the slow wheel of funding for an engineering consultant to come in and. Help us with those standards. And as I said, that was, that is a, that wheel barely moves when it comes to funding, so, we'd have to get that all, we'd have to convince the town. At town meeting that we need to review these standards, if we can't do it in-house as is. So, so I, uh, I agree, I hear what you're saying, I agree with you, I, I am asking that you, you put a little more thought into the issue. And define it better so that we can then decide as a board how we want to proceed.
I'll see what I can do.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I have a late submission, and I don't know if it's late or not, I'm sorry for, probably did my stack, I have an email from Barton Fifth and this has to do with Timberline T H L L C. Somebody you had talked to directly, you or, or Michael, um, from Landers Symes or Symes Landers, which way this goes. We are writing as a direct abutters to the project, can I read this, Mr. Chairman? We've closed.
We, we have, we're, we have tabled the discussion, but seeing that you, that this has already been submitted, let's at least read it into the record.
Okay.
And get copies out to the board.
Yeah.
And at that point, then we will re-table the application.
Okay, we are writing as direct abutters to the project being proposed under application twenty-five two eighty-six. Our house is at thirty-two Timberline, tax map U three lot two, unfortunately, we cannot attend the meeting. Thanks to Rick Dunton and the people at Mayland Development, we have had an opportunity to review the proposed plans. After reviewing and trading some emails, does this ring a bell for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, huh, okay. After reviewing and trading some emails, our only ask is that the current six-foot solid fence along the rear lot line be replaced and kept in good order as a condition of any approval of this project. Approved by your board, we also ask that. Could that be a condition of approval that the fence must be kept in good repair by the responsible party, owner or condo association? And that it is shown on a final approved plan, the fence was agreed to and we believe a condition of the, a condition of approval years ago for the restaurant that was. That replaced the residential building, as the parking area and driveways would cause shining headlights into our home. The current fence is in disrepair and needs replacement. Other than what is hopefully a minor concern, the project that it appears is a good use of the property, if you have any questions, we are available to answer, thank you for your consideration. Landers and Jennifer Symes, thirty-two Timberline Road, Newery, and this was sent March fifth, I just don't remember if I've already given this or not, it doesn't, it didn't really fell.
I, I remember, you and I discussed it vaguely, but I don't think you presented it to.
Okay, well, don't, yeah, can I get a copy of that? Yep.
So there is a fence.
There is a fence, yeah.
And, and apparently disrepair.
It is.
That would be something to look at at the site, the site plan, right?
Yep.
And if discussion's still open on it, oh, note that we added that fence to the plan following that discussion, so current plans show the, the fence.
Well, I noticed there was, uh, some documentation standing there.
It was, been, it's long, it's elongated than what is currently there, to be correct, huh?
No, but there was a fence, there's a fence line back there.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody said you could see the fence line, yeah. All right, so, when we review performance standards and, Mr. Dunton, you might want to brush up on. Section thirteen A A of the performance standards, which is buffers and screening standards. And the board will review the comments.
Okay, I'll make a copy.
At the time.
Yep.
And decide whether or not we have any authority to.
Okay, thank you for letting me get that into the record.
Did you, did you catch that we do have that fence shown on current plans, though?
I did, okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, the one that I was asking about with the trees, because the tree line went up and you could see all the dots look like fence poles.
It's also what's in the legend, says what that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that the applicant was amenable to that.
Yeah, good, all right, I'll make you a copy, Becky.
Okay. Rob, anything?
Nope.
You trying to get back to that wood load of yours in the dark? Meredith, anything to discuss? Gooch?
What?
Yeah, thank you for your, your observations and your questions tonight, and same with you, Bruce, you have anything, I'm sure you're just trying to get back to that steam bath here.
Just gotta go home, I gotta keep something, go to bed.
All right, you want me to go stoke it one more time?
No, 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 we have a little emergency to set for you, so.
Our, uh, next meeting is scheduled for the sixteenth of April. At six o'clock, at which time we have a public hearing on application twenty-five dash two eight five, the Monkey Brook Road Minor Subdivision. And I would like to see if we can get through the findings of fact and conclusions of law for performance standards and criteria of approval. At that meeting, barring any bombshells coming out of the public hearing. You need, I think Joel gave out copies of the worksheets for both of those at the last meeting.
Yeah, I emailed them also.
If you have misplaced them, please pick up another copy. Other than that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Oh.
All right, it is, I need a second. It has been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn the meeting of April second of the Newery Planning Board and reconvene here at six o'clock on April sixteenth.
Actually, no, it can be five o'clock.
No, that's, no, that's, that's May seventh.
That's, that's May, May seventh.
Oh, the site visit. So coming back here.
We're coming back here in two weeks for a public hearing at six o'clock on Monkey Brook Road.
Oh, okay.
And then in five weeks' time, we will be back here, we'll be at five o'clock at.
Field.
Eighth Timberline Road, and then we convene here at six o'clock for a public hearing on that application and then the regular meeting following that.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting, all those in favor?
One, two, three.
Meeting is adjourned. So Rob, if you're out here following you home, I got a tow strap and four-wheel drive, just in case.
He's got four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
Also, you got, and just, just a snap on the chain.
We're still recording.
Yeah, hey, guys.